Oh. Um, the LTC guy is back there. Maybe he can help us log in.
What do you want to do first? Should we do Butler Morris Ave or Andover Street?
So he's been working with that bigger.
Good evening and welcome to the October 15th meeting of the Transportation Subcommittee. Uh, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Councilor Dakota.
Here.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Three present.
All right, on our agenda are two items to discuss. Uh, first is the infrastructure of Andover Street. And I think what I'd want to do right now is hand it over to Ms. Altman and give us a, uh, update of what's, what's going on over there. Also, also to note, Mr. Clerk, that Councilors Gitcher and Belanger are in attendance. Thank you. And Councilor Yum, playing on his phone in the back. No, it's Yum.
Uh, good evening.
Good.
Um, I wanted to bring this opportunity to you for Andover Street 133. Last year, we had gone through a conceptual design process with a, um, an engineering firm that we had retained, um, to take a look at Andover Street and see what we could do to slow traffic, um, make it more inviting, um, just see what the, make it feel more like a neighborhood street, even though it is a gateway into the city because it is lined with single-family homes and it is, um, part of a neighborhood, separates, divides, um, the Belvedere neighborhood. So, the result of that analysis really came up with either a shared use path on one side of the road or two raised bicycle lanes was the recommendation. However, to do all that, we would have to go through the Mast Dot tip process, the Transportation Improvement Program process, which could be a 10-year process. Um, and the city has to fund the design, so we're probably, it's a, it's a big project and it's, um, there were some questions as to the constructability with the concrete, um, maybe having to break it up or whatever. So in the interim, Mast Dot has identified about $4 million in funding to, um, through their localized improvement program. Um, sorry. And what this program is for numbered routes that are under state numbering system but are under our local jurisdiction. So the things that they have proposed as options are either repairing the concrete roadway, which $4 million doesn't get you a lot for the concrete. Um, it would reseal all the joints and it would do some of the corner work, but it definitely would not look like a new road. It would just, it would look like it does now, just patched in some of the worst places. Um, and the joints sealed. So, there's that. Um, it's a perfectly valid way to repair the roadway and use that $4 million, but, um, it doesn't move us anywhere.
Excuse me for one minute. So if we went with that route, what is the durability of such a repair?
So it's just patching, right?
That's it.
So it wouldn't, it's not complete overhaul of the street or anything like that. It would essentially remain the way it is. It would just be an improvement of some of the worst places. They said it would probably be about 10 to 15% of the road would get repaired outside of the, um, resealing of the joints. Yes. So, but it maintains the look of the concrete road. The other option is an HMA overlay, which is a asphalt overlay. Essentially, what they would do is, um, mill off about a little less than an inch of the concrete and repave it with asphalt. Um, they would put down a binder course, they'd put down chip seal to fill in all the, um, the joints, and then they would overlay it with the asphalt. With this treatment, there's the option for, um, a different pavement type, um, like a stamped pavement in this median area, almost like a rumble strip. So you'd remove the two-way left turn lane, put in actual turn pockets, and then have like a rumble strip, so it wouldn't, it would look more like a boulevard than it does right now. Um, you would also be able to put in true bicycle lanes, um, even though they would still be on street. Um, so, but it's removing the concrete, right? So that's the trade-off. The Mast Dot has had good success with this HMA overlay. Um, they did note that within five years, you'd probably see the cracks and you'd have to crack seal, so it would have to be maintained, um, with crack seal. Um, but at the same time, you would be doing that same maintenance on a concrete road consistently. Um, so those are the kind of the two options. I think, um, I'd like to hear your feedback, and I think we are, um, planning to go visit the Belvedere Neighborhood Association, and we also really need to understand, from the abutters, their opinion on the concrete. Um, what we heard during the concept design process was that the road is loud and, um, people go fast on it and so it's even louder. So, um, that's the feedback that we heard from the abutters then. We did not know that con, that an overlay like this was an option at that point, so, um, we weren't able to get that feedback at that point on what their thoughts were on that. So, that's kind of where we are. The money needs to be spent by the state in the next year or so.
Mm-hmm.
So, in order for us not to lose that money, we would need to make a decision one way or the other pretty quickly.
Mr. Gary, also let the record show that Councilor Mercia has joined us. Um, my colleagues, any comments? Councilor Janess? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Noon, either one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I know you have had conversation with the Belvedere Neighborhood, um, you know, about, was any, any of this that you present to us tonight, whether the, uh, the, uh, the HMA overlay or the previous one that you spoke of, was that being shared with the Neighborhood Association? What, how, how you feel there? Uh, what they want here?
So my, so this was not an option presented to us before, during the time period that we were doing the concept plan. So this was not an option presented to the, um, the Neighborhood Association during that initial outreach. Um, they, the feedback was that they loved the trees, they loved the, um, the character of the road, want, they wanted to keep the, the trees and, and, um, the sidewalks, and they wanted it to be nicer for biking, and they wanted it to be safer for people to cross the street. Um, there's a lot of concern about that one, just one lonely crosswalk across that whole stretch. Um, there's some concern about people definitely speeding, um, people that use the left turn lane as a bypass lane. Um, so there was a lot of feedback. Um, there was some pro, you know, we like the character of the concrete, a lot of it's loud and we can't enjoy our yards.
Hmm.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I think, I think this, now that we have the, some of the concept that you present to us tonight, a follow, a follow-up or going back to the Belvedere Neighborhood and hear what they have to say in it, I think it's worthwhile of doing that, you know, whenever you can do that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for the presentation tonight. I think these are, uh, this is an exciting option. I think the HMA overlay may be a good way to go here. Uh, it may be well received by the neighborhood. Um, you did mention that one crossing, which is what I was going to ask about. Is there any opportunity here as part of this project to either do some narrowing or pedestrian shelters or anything like that in a way to foster, um, more crossings somewhere in that stretch? If, if there's $4 million to be spent and we're spending $2 to $3 million on the overlay, do we have access to, to maybe do something like that? Um, and then you also mentioned the bike, the potential for bike facilities. Would that be included as part of this project or is that just a future thing?
Yes. So the, um, with an HMA overlay, we would be able to put true buffered bicycle lanes, um, narrow the travel lanes a little bit. Um, definitely you could, we would narrow that center median to a, just a left turn lanes and a, a nice treatment, um, so people could still get in their driveways, but it wouldn't look like a, a passing lane, right? Um, the, uh, this treatment would not preclude us from moving forward with a bigger project if we wanted to do so in the future. Does, so it would provide the bicycle lanes that are to current design, but they would stay on the street.
True.
But if we, if the city wanted to move forward in the future, we could definitely do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I do think it would be, it would be outstanding if as part of this, we could do, you know, whether it's some narrowing or, or something, particularly at that Douglas Road crossing, and then if there's any opportunity to create another crossing and kind of do similar things to, to make it feel more like that neighborhood street we're looking for. Um, but thank you for this and I'm sure the neighbors will be excited to learn more.
Just for clarity, um, from the sidewalk, how far out does it have to be for a bicycle lane?
So, right now, it's striped as, um, a buffer from the curb of a couple of feet, and then there's a five-foot bike lane, bike lane.
Yeah.
Um, it's that way because there's a seam, right, where a bike lane would be next to the curb, so it's not comfortable for bicyclists to bike on. Um, with a change to the overlay, you would be able to have a nice, um, three-foot, um, buffer, painted buffer, and then a five-foot bike lane on each side.
So I'm worried about the narrowing of lanes where you are getting that lane to take that left there or off of one of the side roads.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be narrowed as well, correct?
They would probably do a 10-foot left turn lane.
Okay.
Median area, and then an 11-foot, um, travel lane, and then whatever's left would be the buffered bicycle lane.
Okay. Councilor Belanger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you to Ms. Altman. Um, great news, Liz. This is, this is excellent, officially funded by Mast DOT. So, uh, we will certainly take it, and I promise you this, the dialogue will be done in time, so this money gets used, I can promise you. Um, but with that being said, so what's, what's the timelines here when this goes out to bid? Do we have to decide what, obviously what route we're going here? We got basically two options, so we need to do that by, what is your estimation? So we can get it out to bid and make sure this money doesn't escape us?
So this would all be done by Mast Dot, their design engineer and their contractor. So the city, it, there's no cost to the city. We just need to decide. We need to decide probably in the next three weeks what we want to do so they can finish design and construct it next, next year.
Three?
That's their design, right? They want to do it next year?
Please speak, I can't hear you. It's a microphone.
Sorry. Um, this, they are looking at try to finish this by 2026. The funding has been pushed for a couple of years already.
Mm-hmm.
We have not, during the scoping season, it's been for a little while. So they, they were very generous and very nice, been keep moving the money and keep that pocket for us, so we do need to move forward.
Wow. Okay, I didn't know. Was that, uh, as far as selection, it's that urgent? I thought we had until the spring. Um, what is the maximum time? I mean, I, I'm, you know, I will certainly read out to my constituents as my, as, as well as my colleagues, but, um, I mean, we have a neighborhood group meeting in November, early to mid-November, but, you know, I would like an input session or two at the Riley School, so all the residents can chime in. So, um, I am glad you're in here tonight for this purpose. Um, so that being said, what's the maximum time that you could get for us till the end of the calendar year by any chance?
I think if we need to be there, very good to work with.
Yeah.
Need to be, um, I think another month or two should be okay if we can turn, ideally we would like to give them a decision so they can use the winter time to design.
Yeah, okay.
So they can send out to bid, so we don't miss the construction season. That's the goal.
Okay, all right. Uh, I, okay, we need, I slash my colleagues, we need to get going on this for dialogue. It's very important, as, as Liz, we went through, was on Draper Street, had great input from, as the speed humps and it's unanimous, practically unanimous, that speed humps are desired on that street, and I think we'll get the, hopefully the same outcome on one, on one way. Um, so that being said, so do we have the room here for a, are we talking a bike lane on either side of Andover and a center lane for left and right turn? Do we have all the?
Yes.
The width for that? We do?
It's, it's pretty much out there that.
Yeah, it is, kind of is, yeah, yeah.
And so it would really just be formalized, like a better use of the width, curb-to-curb width that's out there right now.
Okay.
Would not be, they wouldn't be narrowing it physically at all. They wouldn't be touching the curb.
Okay. I mean, the asphalt route would be bike-friendly, that's for sure. I don't, you rarely see a bike on Andover Street. Um, so, uh, lastly, now, it took a $2 million to four million. If this, if this does not cost four million, can we put any of that into sidewalks or anything? Because I'm hearing from constituents, it's a sidewalk issue as well.
There's, um, they wouldn't be able to tackle a lot of the sidewalks. They would probably be able to do some of the ADA ramp, they would extend it to the ADA ramps, but this really is resurfacing money.
I got you. Okay. Don't hurt the ask, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming in, and, um, so, uh, we need to get going on this to get some input sessions going and, um...
And I, um, will have, I'll email Erica from the Belvedere Neighborhood Association.
Yes, yes, I will as well. Okay. All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as we go through this, while we have the contractors here, is there a way that the city could provide some funding also at the same time and maybe utilize those services to save money at the same time and maybe put some raised crosswalks or something like that going across that could have pedestrian safety and slow down pieces to it? Because I just think if you asphalt this in its condition, you're creating a raceway. It's going to be New England Dragway Part II, and it already is. So some of those things already start to slow it down currently. But I'm just wondering, is there a way, if the city found some funding somewhere else, some other funding source, while they're there, we may be able to save mobilization costs and stuff like that and try to put in some of those crosswalks that we're talking about, raised crosswalks going across. Is there a way to do that in such a short period of time?
Um, we could probably donate some funding to additional crossings or ADA ramps or things like that. Unfortunately, Andover Street would not be eligible for raised crossings. It's got too much volume. Um, it's a primary emergency evacuation route, um, and emergency access route, so, and there's a lot of trucks. Those, they would just get beat up, the trucks and the, and the, um, speed humps. Um, so, but it's primarily because it's a, the emergency route.
But I think you did answer the question, but there are ways to put cross, more crosswalks going across there and try to slow down the traffic and, and try to like maybe, um, narrow it a little bit at the same time and make it so the bike lane actually goes through something rather than, you know, uh, in the middle of the road, so it's maybe a little bit more protected at the same time. If there are ways of doing that, how long would it take to put something together like that and see what, you know, the calming measures that you think would be in place would happen?
So I believe that we could work with Mast Dot's consultant, Howard Stein-Hudson, to say, to add maybe median islands or, or like small pedestrian refuge islands or something. At the same time, uh, if the city could, I, you know, if we had some funding, we could contribute to it. Um, it's not a bad question to ask them.
Because I think, I think it's a perfect time for it, because if, either way they go, whether you go with asphalt or you go repairing the concrete, I think the major concern on Andover Street is the speed. And unless you live directly on Andover Street where you hear the thump, the thump as you drive down, but I do think every person in Belvedere really cares about speed more than anything else going on in that road. So if there's a way at the same time, while we have mobilization, if we could just look at that and see if we could do some speed calming measures at the same time, that would be a home run for all of us if it, if it could be added to the project at the same time.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but.
Sorry. Um, I actually, that, that question I actually raised with Mast Dot already. Um, they seems to have a reservation on that because of the mixed funding issues. Um, they did mention that if we want to do something ahead of them, incorporate it, they, they're happy to work with together. In terms of mixed funding, he's like, hmm, that was, that was his reaction. That might be a concern from Mast Dot.
I think that if you put the contract out at the same time, the same contractor would have an advantage as he starts to bid into the projects. So you're going to end up the same way.
It has to be a separate bid.
Yeah, I, I don't think you'll have a problem.
The funding, yeah.
I think that they'll come in at a good number for you because they know the mobilization is shortly after, if it fits in their scheduling. I, I do hope that we can look at that piece and try to get that together for the neighbors.
Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think also, speed and something really slick like, asphalt will create a lot of speeding. So, to put a cross bump in there, if you think that you heard bumping from the cement, you're going to hear it from that when a truck goes over that, and I don't think they would want to hear that. So we got to figure out a way. But I'm, I'm wondering, it's going to be quite an undertaking to take that cement, you know, roadway off, isn't it? How thick that must be?
They wouldn't, they would leave the concrete as the bed.
Oh, they would.
And they would just mill off the top, like three-quarters of an inch of it.
Oh.
To give a flat surface. Get rid of all the, um, potholes and all that kind of stuff that's out there. Um, and then they would treat all the seams and then the asphalt would go over top of it.
Okay. I wondered about that, so thank you for explaining it. So I, I understand to myself that I think there's no meridian strip with, with grass or anything? No, that's out of the question?
Not with this project, no.
It's not wide enough for something?
You'd have to actually remove the concrete to get anything to grow.
Oh, I see.
On that kind of thing, on that. It just, it would grow.
Well, anyway, thank you. It's what I wanted to know. So you'd recommend asphalt, would you?
I think that is a really good option if, um, but I personally do not have an emotional connection to the concrete, so.
Well, because we would ask your opinion, you're the professional. We're not, I'm not, I know that. But I want to know, um, when this meeting comes up, if we could know as a council, when the Belvedere meeting will take place, so we can listen as well, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilor Belanger, then Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Councilor Mercy brings up some great points. I've, you know, I talked to a small sample of constituents there as to this issue, and some, you know, there's a couple that, I think asphalt was the greater, uh, option, but there are a few who like the nostalgia of the cement, you know, but they live off, you know, uh, one of the streets, and they like the nostalgia, but then, you know, they're not on the street listening to the boom, the, the block when trucks have ladders and the vibration and the noise, that association with that. So that has to be taken into consideration as well. But, um, to, uh, Councilor Gitcher's point, you know, the traffic calming and, you know, we all know the high volume there. You can't, speed humps are out, raised crosswalks are out. So what do we have for options that could calm this? I mean, and as Councilor Gitcher stated earlier, the asphalt, sure, tends to speed, things seem to tick up, if anything. So what are our options to name a few that we could have to calm the traffic down?
I think we could, um, look at the potent, like, could we put in median pedestrian refuge islands at some of the crossings? Could we put bump outs that the bike lane could go through? Um, could we do more crossings to make it look more like a neighborhood street and not like a highway? Um, those are a couple of the things that it, and then that I would, we would be able to consider also, just physically narrowing the, the lanes and putting in real bike lanes makes it look a little bit less like the, you know, the Speedway. Um, but it is, we, we are not changing the curb-to-curb width, we are just trying to reallocate it, so there's, you know, not quite so vehicle-focused.
Got you. Okay, thank you. I think, uh, bump outs, there'd be some challenges to that on this busy road. It, they really would. But I like the idea of making it more like a neighborhood feel with more, more crosswalks and bike lanes. Gives some more side street neighborhood feel than it does a freeway or cut, a gateway as this is. So, um, that's definitely an option that I'll focus on too, to my constituents as we, as dialogue goes on further. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to City Engineer Ting. I, I just have a couple questions on timeframes, because as you said, if they don't want to coexist, then we'd have to go out to bid and everything else. What do you see for, it's obviously going to be a scheduling challenge to try to put something together, get it out to bid, and then get people over there to do whatever the traffic calming is after talking to a neighborhood. How long after a neighborhood decides or you go out to a neighborhood like we did on Highland Ave? Can we come back to the drawing board and get it out to bid and get it into fruition where we have contractors on the road? I don't know that you're going to fit within this timeframe.
I'm not sure. It depends on what we come up with, and to be honestly, if something that we're looking at traffic calming, um, I already started a conversation with Mast Dot on, can you start doing some sketching for us to see? And that's kind of in the process already. And sometimes that they may be able to incorporate it for us instead of we going out and do it ourselves. Um, like I said, um, they're very good to work with. Um, I had mentioned about sidewalk, I've mentioned about ADA ramp, beacons. They're like, yeah, we can do some of that. They can't do the whole stretch, but they, they're more than happy to accommodate some of the critical point. Um, same thing with traffic calming. I think once we come back and think about what the design needs to look like and what can be changed, along with Howard Stein's, um, designs that they're currently working on, maybe something that Mast Dot could help us with, which will be ideal.
So I like that the thought's already been there. So I, I don't think that you're far off of where we're going, and I do think that traffic calming has to be a part of this process, because if we go out and make all these repairs, it's kind of like everybody wants a brand-new street until they get a brand-new street. The potholes slow down people, and then when they get a brand-new street, the first thing they come back and say is, oh, no, this is too nice, and people are driving over it really quick. And Andover Street has, I stood there on, um, school committee member Conway's porch one day, and he says, watch the sign, and one person went by at 65 miles an hour, you know, and I thought they were trying to challenge whether they could get it into triple digits, but when you just sit there and you look and you, so I, I do think that if we go back, the challenge for me would be the scheduling, but does Mast, Mast Dot have any wiggle room in the money? Will they produce more money if this thing goes over? the money? Will they produce more money if this thing goes over?
If it's go over a little bit, they probably will be able to accommodate that. The, the goal is to come up with a concept designs or we're going with. And then once they do the, scope that section out and then we'll sign an agreement with them how much it's gonna be.
How soon do you need concept designs? How soon do you need an answer from the neighborhood?
Um, as soon as possible. Like I say, if we can get it, ideally, I would love to get it within a month. So we say, okay, this is what we're doing. We're gonna move forward. Because once we tell them which way to go, they still have times to, to work with. Councilor Blanger say, can we do it till the end of the month, the year? We probably could. But I would not suggest go beyond that.
So before Thanksgiving, you would like an answer? So I guess my, my, my point to the board is, is I would ask one of you or all three of you to make a motion that maybe the neighborhood subcommittee call a special meeting over at the Riley School and then you send that over to the council so that can be supported, so that, that gets moving. Or, you know, one of the subcommittees could do that really quick. I, I think that that's the way that, and get this into people's hands. And, because I think you need two meetings by then.
Council, Councilor Janess?
Uh, thank you. I do think a member of the public would like to speak. But before I do, that was gonna be my question, is what action is needed from us as a subcommittee or the council as a whole to move this forward at this time? Is this just advisory for us and you can just take this to the neighborhood? Or do we need the neighborhood's subcommittee to meet? I don't think that we necessarily do. But I, I'll take your advice as to what the best path forward is.
Probably just go to the neighborhood meeting with as many councillors as want to come. I don't know if we need to make that a public meeting or official. But I think, once we have a positive understanding of which way the neighborhood general, I think the neighborhood is probably the critical.
I'd agree. I think, I think the biggest input needs to be from the neighbors and the neighborhood group more than the council or even a subcommittee on the council. Somebody feels differently.
Councilor Noon?
I would recommend that the managers and have his team set up meeting with the neighborhood in the Belvedere as quick as possible, even next week or week afters. I understand that they meet monthly, but this is of utmost importance that we, we, we want their input on it. Because again, I mean, nobody in this council really, most, most of the council do not want to make decision on this without hearing from the neighborhood. So the best way to do is the managers and his team set up that meeting, call the neighborhood leaders in Belvedere's and set up the meeting either next week or week afters. And then, yeah, in the evening, okay. That way, that way, any and all council can attend.
Council Blanger, when is that meeting on a monthly basis?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the next neighborhood group meeting is not till November. And that would be the 13th, Wednesday, the 13th. Now, what I'd like, and I will add that the neighborhood group meeting is really not as organized as it used to be, so to speak, but we have, or as, as large as it used to be. You know, we're trying to get those numbers up. So here's what I'd like to propose. You know, if we can have the Belvedere Neighborhood Group Meeting on the 13th, maybe have an input session on Saturday, the 16th at the Riley School, for the whole neighborhood to come together. And that would give, you know, ample time to get notify all the residents, get them at the, if not at the Neighborhood Group Meeting, at the Riley School. And we could have one good input session that I think we could come up with a decision on that day. So I want to get input from my colleagues. And, Mr. Chairman, we also have a, a resident from Andover Street that would like to speak on the topic as well. But I'd like-
Lisa, you're, you're thinking that this is gonna take two meetings in order to get-
Uh, yes, I do. I'd like one meeting of notification and some dialogue and then one big one where, you know, those who can come live. One will be Zoom, because the Belvedere Neighborhood Group Meetings are only on Zoom now, Mr. Chairman. And I don't think that's suffice. So I'd like to have an, you know, from then, we can notify the group and we have a month to do outreach, if you will, for Saturday, the 16th at the Riley School. I think it'll be well attended and we can come up, we can really hammer out an option at, at that time. And I think it gives us enough time with the state as well. We're cutting it close, but I think there's enough time. Thank you.
The 13th would be actually a month from now.
Yeah.
What I'm thinking is, and the meeting is not public, it's by Zoom, you're saying?
Correct.
All right. So.
It's a problem.
Personally, I would think that we would do it on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry to interrupt, but there's only one person that I can think of that can fill the Riley School Hall in a Saturday afternoon or whatever, morning or whatever, and that's Brian Martin. Just call Brian Martin, he'll get the whole place packed.
I think if we have the city manager and get in touch with the-
You're right.
People love there.
I know what-
Saturday meeting might suffice and-
Yeah, I think that'd be great, Mr. Chairman. I understand Councilor Mercier's point, but that was an ADU, that was a citywide issue.
Yeah.
This is more localized to the residents. Those in particular live on the street, but also, you know, the side streets as well. Their importance is important as well. But, but sure, Mr. Martin is, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure he gets the word too. But I think that works if my colleagues agree. I think that's a great strategy to go about it.
Thank you.
If we're all on hand.
Ms. Hultman, do you want the resident to speak first or?
I'd be great.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Laura Gilmore. I am an Andover Street resident. And I came today because I have been a strong advocate for some improvements to Andover Street for a couple of years now. So just want to say thank you for leaning into this, for thinking about what we can do to make that street safer. I started advocating for changes to Andover Street after I was walking with my then 18-month-old son and had a car crash into a telephone pole right next to us. It is pretty clear that something needs to happen. And I would love to see us continue to talk about traffic calming throughout that neighborhood and think about, there, there's a lot of ways to do traffic calming that aren't just speed humps. So I would love to see us, you know, especially on Andover Street, think about ways that we can make that center lane seem less like a lane that people should drive in. Just last week, I saw someone drive for almost a mile in it. So I, I'm thrilled that this is, this conversation is happening. I really want to thank you for pushing this forward because I think it's really important to be thinking about people who live on Andover Street and people who travel on Andover Street by a number of different modes. By walking, there are some people who bike, it's a major bus route. And it, it's not even safe for drivers right now. So I would, if, if there is a, some sort of a meeting, happy to help organize neighbors to come. But I also just want to say that the city team did a great job putting together some draft designs and doing a lot of public outreach about a year or so ago. And I, I know that the concrete specifically versus asphalt wasn't the major theme of that, but there was some really great feedback from those sessions and those were advertised public meetings. So hoping we can also lean on that to keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Liz, you want to say a final statement?
No, just thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight. And I look forward to working with the Andover Street residents and Belvedere and move this forward.
The subcommittee wants to thank you and Ting for all the work that you've done on this. Like you said, it's been about a year or so. If one of my council colleagues would like to make a motion that we set up a transportation subcommittee for November 16th at, say, 10 o'clock in the morning at Riley School, I would entertain that.
Second.
First made by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Noon. All right, well, I'll sit on that one. Next agenda item is the French Street and Father Morissette Boulevard. Conceptual design. Didn't kind of give us a mini version, Liz and Ting? I will say that the subcommittee did receive an email and also a couple of phone calls from other companies and institutions in the city about having a say on this. From the National Historical Park to UMass Lowell to, I'm not sure else, the Lowell Plan called me personally. But if you can give us a, a short synopsis, that'd be great.
Sure.
Great.
So Father, French Street and Father Morissette itself is, it's been almost like a highway for the last few years. It's, it's a Speedway. We have been looking at how to almost like a traffic calming things, like how do we, what method can we use to create the neighborhood field calming situation instead of this big giant boulevard that doesn't have, really have the capacity. So we started looking at that from French Street, from Bridge Street all the way down to University Ave. So it will encompass Two Street, French and Father Morissette. The total about like a mile itself. Initially, I was hoping to do it all in one phase, but the budget come in, the estimate come in over $10 million. So we have to break it into two pieces. The first phase will be from Bridge to Aken, just past Aken Drive, little bit shy of half mile itself. And the goal is to redesign the roadway, the cross section itself that to accommodate pedestrians, bike and vehicle, along with some raised ta, raised intersection, crosswalk itself. The, there's two different options that were looked at, especially at Aken Drive itself. I'm gonna focus on that for a moment. The first one is to keep it similar to what we have right now, is to signalize intersections. The traffic study showing that current surface, level of surface, it's at, I want to say at D? D, is that right? So while we're doing, redoing the design, we're thinking about, okay, what happened if we, how can we improve that? We have very confined area bounded by the high school, the Lowell Housing, the garage and also the post office. We really have a very limited territory here. So what can we do? So we look at, how about urban roundabout? It's a smaller roundabout unlike the one in Songas Arena. It's have two lanes, this one. It's only have one lane. But it's 20 feet wide. We have asked the, our traffic engineer that we hire, the HB's, to do a study on it. What is the comparison between the current signalized intersections and this roundabout? We don't know, we know that UMass Lowell is coming in with the Link project. We know that, you know, high school is brand new. Housing is there along with the events at Songas Arena. But we have the limited space. So what can we do? What can we improve the situation? So we have asked the traffic engineer to look at comparing what's the maximum capacity the signalized intersection can have versus the roundabout. Which one make more sense? Which one can flow more traffic? So they have done that study and it's showing that the roundabout, this particular roundabout can accommodate 75% more traffic than what is there now. It is, I want to go through that traffic study. You can see that roundabout at, if, when we increase about 75%, which mean we increase about a little bit over 1,000, a thousand vehicle, we will have, get to level of service F versus the signalized intersection, it will fail at 50%. So based on that, we would like to, from where we're standing in engineering wise, like this makes sense. Even though we know the, doing the event situation, it's gonna be a, a, a challenge. Because when you try to discharge 5,000 vehicle at one shot, it's gonna be challenged in both scenario. But this roundabouts will more, will move more vehicle at the time. So with that, we are looking at the cross sections. We're looking at, we're gonna have parking in front of the high school. I know that high school's always been a challenge in terms of pickup and drop off. We have incorporated the pickup and drop off area for the parents, for the students in front of the high school. We have narrowed down the roadways to 11 feet, one-laned in each directions to, to have that traffic calming effect on that. And along-
Just to clarify.
Yep.
At the beginning of your statement, you said with the new Link program and Lowell High School being fully completed, is that 75% incorporated into all the, that of those extra cars and vehicles?
So it's not. Because the reason I say that is Link still, UMass Lowell still does not have a true program yet. And we've been working with, I know we got the email earlier, Liz forwarded to me. We actually been working with UMass Lowell along with National Park and high school as well for the last couple of months already to talk about these things. With the Link project, since they don't have a program yet, and with the brand new East Campus, where they're also talking about expanding Hall Street Bridge, there are, potentially there are other avenues that they can release, help the, move the traffic into a different direction out, out of the city instead of all combined disintersections. They will not, UMass Lowell will not have the program until, I want to say sometime next year for say. So our goal is to finish this Phase One in, when the high school is open. So the timing is a little lag. But because of the intersection amount of roadway that we have, space we have, can we accommodate all the, all the vehicle? I don't know.
So right now, if you had your drawthers, Liz and yourself, you would go at the roundabout?
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Without knowing, because that is a better scenario. It's a better situation for vehicle and the, the traffic itself.
Thank you. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think it's important that we, before we make this decision, that we do engage the stakeholders who've all reached out to us and want to have input on this. One particular thought I have, looking at this roundabout, is I know that from conversations I've had with folks at the university, they envisage that this would be the gateway in and out of Link. So not only when everything's built and, and it's an active neighborhood and environment, but also while it's being built. So I'm a little concerned with the roundabout and just what that would do to access for construction vehicles and equipment that might be coming in and out of that area to build these buildings, as well as the larger pieces of equipment that come in and out of the Songas for running events and things like that. I don't know if, if this kind of roundabout would present a challenge for those kind of vehicles trying to access this area because there really isn't another way for them to get in and, or out of there.
So the roundabout itself, it's 20 feet wide. We designed for fire truck. And it's also, it's mountable curve. So in this area, I'm not sure I can follow this, like the red area, you can, the vehicle can actually mount it. Instead of six inch, six inch tall, it's only a couple inches. If it needs to, they can mount this additional territory space for them to move around.
Okay. I'm just, I'm thinking of some of the, you know, large precast trailers that brought in the pieces for the parking garage over at the Hamilton Canal District and things like that. Those kind of large vehicles trying to access this area of the city for, for a big construction project. You know, I, I want to make sure we don't, we don't jeopardize what could potentially be a, a very large economic development opportunity for the city with our roadway design. So I think it's important we have those conversations with them before we move forward.
Absolutely. We are actually planning on, I probably should mention that, we are planning on actually having, engaging the neighborhood meetings and the publics in the next couple of weeks or so to discuss this as well.
Please make sure the city council is aware of that date as well. And throw, throw a couple of dates out there so we can-
Yeah.
Majority of the council can, can go to that event. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chang, for the report. This new concept is really a good one. It's welcomed by a lot of people, including the debaters, some of the debaters that sent email to us this afternoon. And also, you already engaged them already, some of them, say National Park and UMass Lowell and, and the high school. With the exception that, you know, the Link didn't come about yet at that, during that conversation. Now that the Link is here, you know, we, we do certainly anticipate it, you know, more traffic in the area. The roundabout is a good, you know, take on that. But also there's a possibility to continue that conversation that you have had with them, you know, now that including Link into it. And I know that Lowell Housing Authority is- And I know that Lowell Housing Authorities and, you know, the Acres Neighborhood and stuff like that, so it's all those impact, all these debaters. And all this is good for everyone, not just for the city in term of, you know, making sure that our street are safe. And this is, this sounds, this is, to me, is complete street kind of, you know, plan that you put together and hopefully that will change that areas and making sure that it's safe and it's all for all the people in the area. So I know that the directors of Lowell Plan, Alison LeMay, have sent in a corresponding, you know, and she asked if we could request that it be submitted and for filed for the meeting. So I was just, you know, and some of the questions she have had here, posed here, I'm sure when the, the meeting is set, you know, those answer, those question will be answered. So my motion is that, that, Mr. Chairman, that we submit the corresponding and for file for the subcommittee tonight.
That's fine. That's seconded before Councilor Getch.
Engineer Ting, I want to thank you for this. I think that we're, some things need to be explained just a little bit better, what level of service actually means. Because when you start off and you look at the traffic signal, she's already rating it a D, that means approaching unstable flow. That's what that means. So already, once the lights up, you're already at an unstable flow. That means it's not good, and it goes down from there. E is an unstable flow, meaning it's going to back up and you're already into chaos. When you look at the alternative two, you're looking at it starts off in an A, free-flowing. So that's really good. And then when you look at increasing by 25, you're still at an A, so it's still free-flowing. It's, it's still moving. But on the other hand, you were at an E where now it's an unstable flow, where it's already backed up. And when you increase to 50%, it goes to a B, which means reasonably free-flowing. So 50% of the traffic volumes that they're measuring right now are at that. And then increasing of 75% traffic volume is a level of service F, which F is forced flow with frequent slowing and travel times that are difficult to predict. So I think right off the bat, if you look at this for just function-wise, as an engineer would look, that this makes a lot of sense to bring forward and try to make that flow. And one of the things that we're not taking into consideration is the high school is not near capacity. So if you start adding that light with near capacity at the high school with the Link, a traffic light is obsolete at that point. It was obsolete from the beginning, if this study is correct, and it starts off with a D, and it says approaching unstable flow, that could be an F right off the bat. And then what do we do at that point? So I do agree with Councilor Janess in saying, you know, let's invite people in. But we also have to take into consideration, and I do think the engineers over at the university, you know, run by an engineer. I think that they're, they're kind of at the point where function is the key, and then let's design around a function. And I think that that probably at this point is looking towards the roundabout or something other than the traffic signalization, whether it's a roundabout, whether it's something different. But I think that when you look at these and you look at level of service, there's a challenge with the traffic light if we look at it as it's designed right now.
I think we're all in agreement, Councilor.
I just think the explanation is the big piece of what the LOS means, the Level of Service. And I think that if people just dive in and look at what level of service actually means to an engineer, and explains that across, the decision is much easier to make.
Right. Ms. Holtman, obviously I forwarded you the email today, so if we could have all the people that are on that email at that meeting, let's try to get a date, probably in two or three weeks.
Is next Thursday confirmed?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Mm-hmm.
We were trying to get it for next Thursday, but we're not confirmed yet on that.
Okay.
We'll let you know as soon as we get that.
Yep. Probably the week after that.
Yeah.
We can do a definite presentation with the levels of service and what that means.
Yes.
And some of the other questions, there were some really good points in those, in that letter that I agree Suffolk Street should probably have a crossing.
Yep.
And then just an explanation of, you know, what this, the roundabout is trying to achieve.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good work.
Great.
Thank you very much. That was seconded by Councilor Janess. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned by Commissioner Janess, seconded by Commissioner Noon. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.